Please kindly confirm that you can see my screen.
Yes, we can see your screen.
Alright, thank you. You are sharing, you are sharing the link now. So you can always invite your colleagues to join in case they are unable to join us live on Zoom. So the YouTube opportunities also there. For them to be able to have access. I'm trying to, what is that name? So please, Mr. Huber, please, you are showing us your body. Please kindly take off your camera. Mr. Huber, can you hear us? Please take off your, take off your camera.
Sorry, sorry. Okay. Is my body not showing again?
Yes, it is. It's not showing again. Just please stay muted. So today we'll be talking about the implementation guide. And in a couple of minutes, in the next two minutes, we're going to commence this session. Please kindly exercise patience while we attend to some issues to enable us be, to enable us to be able to. Right, thank you for your patience. Let's go back to. So you can all see my screen. Today's session will be about ISO 45001 2018 implementation guide. And this particular document we are using, if you went, if you go through the, the flyer that we shared, it is clearly stated that this like, this more like a study session where we all look at it together. Please, Mr. Shinidu, please kindly stay muted and please take off your camera. Please take off your camera. Please take off your camera. Thank you. So today we'll be talking about ISO 45001 2018. And we'll be focusing on implementation. How do you carry out implementation of the standards? And like I said earlier, we'll be using a study guide owned by NQ E. So please, this is a complete means to clearly state that we do not claim ownership of this document, but I found it very useful and a resourceful material for us to use for our today's session. For everyone who has always joined us or all our members, they know that our platform is a platform for us to always learn, online and also relay. So this is basically a study session where we all take a look at what the requirements are and how you should implement the requirement of ISO 45001 2018. If you come across what we shared live today, where I wrote 2015, that it was a typo, our flyer, we go through our flyer, it's clearly stated 2018. Yes, the latest version is 2018. So. Please kindly note that. So going through this document, I realized that, well, first of all, let us remember that the ISO standard is one of the, is a, is one of the standards that are being used to, for so many purposes in the world of today. For many of us, I don't know what ISO means. ISO is International Organization for Standardization. Yeah, these are the basics. And the issue, they develop and issue many standards for various management systems and the likes. Videos, management system, the usual guidelines and so many other things. So when it comes to management system, there are standard requirements that are brought together in order to help us to be able to address issues in our workplaces. Or even as an individual, or even as, as an entity, as an NGO, as an industry, as an organization, as an institution, no matter what, where you fall in, they are being, they are all being categorized as organization. So for every form of organization that you have, you can, you can always implement the ISO standard. Which means that, that's a bookie, what we call a bookie here in Africa, down the street. That Malam down the street can decide to implement any of the standard to address, to manage its organization, yes, to manage its business. That woman that is selling food, that is selling walnut, that's selling a car, that's selling something down the street can also implement. Same thing applies to bookshops. They can also implement any of the standard. Same thing applies to a mini mart, same thing applies to a supermarket, same thing applies to an organization. Same thing applies to an oil and gas, an oil and gas firm, same thing applies to a training institution, same thing applies to a bank, any form of organization where you have a purpose and what you do. So you can always implement any of the standard in order to have addressed various management system, management system issues. One of the most common management systems that has been implemented most is that of occupational health and safety, which is ISO 45001 2018, which is the latest version of the ISO standard. So this ISO 45001 2018 has been established to address occupational health and safety. And what we are doing today is to go through the process of implementation. We might not go through it as detailed as, as we, as we, as we want, but at least it will give us some kind of guide. So like I said, this document is owned fully by NQ E. The, the, I think the certification body, just like QMSI and they are, they are one of those to come with actually. Let's go through the content. Going through this material, we'll be talking about the benefits, which we will not talk much about. The PDC cycle, the risk-based thinking, the scope, normative reference, terms of definitions, context, leadership, planning. These are the clauses and the standard, you know, support operation, performance evaluation and improvement. For many of us that have attended our previous classes, we have discussed so much about the PDC approach. I've discussed much about the structure of the, of the high-level structure, the plan, the duty, check and act. What to implement staff from clause four, which is quarters of the organization. Four, five, six are the planning phase, seven, eight are the do phase, nine are the check phase and the ten is the act phase. We have discussed this in the past. If you want to have a review, you can go back to some of our videos that we've done. And this structure is similar for night time and it's structured for most of the management system, even though all the management system, they have the same clauses, even though there are specific requirement and some sub clauses that are might be different, they actually follow the same process. Introduction, the, the ISO standard, which is ISO 45001, is a new international standard which provide a framework regarding size, activity, geographical location to manage and continuously improve health and safety. So these are processes that have been put in place. It's a standard that any organization can choose to implement. And most times, it's, it has become so widely accepted that many clients will even want you to implement that standard in your organization. So as professionals, who wants to grow in the field of health and safety? Since that is what most of the organizations want, is an international standard. It means that yourself, you need to know how to go about it. Because your ability to be able to understand what they stand, what I support that I talked about and how to implement it and also how to audit it to ensure that you stay in check of your management system is what will actually support you in your striving towards excellence as a professional. So the risk-based approach standard introduced the common and Excel structure, which provides compatibility with other standard. Like what I've said, they've done it in such a way that it is very much, that it is very much compatible. That is very much compatible with other standard. That's why, that's why you call it the high-level structure. They have designed it in, they call it an Excel, a high-level structure in such a way that you can easily integrate it to other standard. Looking at it from a risk-based approach and that is why it has to do with risk, quality risk, environmental risks, and in this case now health and safety risk, is a risk-based approach. And that is where the clause six that talks about the planning, versus point two, it talks about action to address risk. If you look at these clauses, they will make reference to some other, many other clauses because that is the center point about risk-based approach. And it's from this risk that you are able to identify that you put control measures in place, carry out your operations in line with the standard and check to ensure that you are managing the risk as well, as much as possible. And you are promoting this positive safety culture. So at the end of the day, you realize that implementing this standard will go a long way in helping you to address so many issues that you might be having in your workplace. So adopting this system include workers' participation. So when you look at the standard, unlike 9001 and 4001, that doesn't have worker participation. This particular one focuses on worker participation also, which is clause 5.4, because there's a need to engage workers because health and safety is directly talking about them. 9001 is talking about customer satisfaction, about your customer, about your business. 4001 is talking about the environment, sustainability, greenhouse, reducing emission, carbon emission, promoting environmental practices, waste management and the likes. But this particular one, 4001 is also talking about life cycle perspective and so many other areas. But this particular one is, is more particular about the workers, talking about health and safety. The safety of the workers primarily and the health of the workers. If we're not talking about safety of the environment, safety of the equipment and safety of the processes. So there's a need for us to include that. So ISO 45001 specifically have clause 5.4 that talks about how do you engage and participate to work and ensure worker participation. The organization can integrate this system within its business, which will contribute to preventing accidents. And, and long and short term ill health effect, the standard provides a platform for developing a positive safety culture and workers will be promoting workers moving. Once the policy framework has been put in place, now, when you want to start something and it's going to an organization, the management commitment comes into play. Now, management's commitment is, 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 is like the center of the framework. Where management are not committed, everything becomes impossible. Now, one of those ways to display their commitment is by, is, is, is by that policy, that statement. You know, there's a common saying, if it's not written, it's not done. So if you, if you want to tell us that you are committed to health and safety, definitely you should put it in writing form. That is where it becomes the leg out tender. It doesn't need to be combined in. So because of this purpose, there is a reason to, 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 to develop a policy framework and not just about policy. Setting objective to, to, to achieve those policy. What you have said, you are going to do in your policy, you set objective to ensure that you meet up with your policy. And that is why even the closer point two says, the policy sets the framework for objective, for certain objective. So the, the policy will, will, will lead to your objectives. For example, you set a policy that you want to reduce, you are committed to preventing accident in the workplace. So what are those objective that you put in place to meet up with that particular policy, part of those policy? So the standard then asks the organization to audit, review and improve the system, including assessment of compliance obligation. So you can see how the standard works. So once you have set the, the policy, you have set the, from the policy, you have set the objectives and you implement actions to achieve the objectives, then you monitor it to be sure that you're actually meeting up with your set objective. You carry out performance evaluation. You carry out all this because that's what clause nine talks about, performance evaluation, nine point one, monitoring, measurement, analysis and evaluation. You monitor it, then nine point two, that talks about internal audit, the nine point three, that talks about management review. All this are to ensure that you are meeting up with your policy that you have set for yourself as an organization. So it's not just about developing policy and placing it everywhere. The policy is part of, is, is, is just like part of the MBA, like what is MBA or what time should I use? Of, of, of the whole structure that will help us to understand and to help us and to guide you on how to improve your management system as an organization. And this approach provides the organization with both assurance and business continuity. The. I'm trying to see if I can, like this, like this. Standard requirement can significantly help the organization to improve internally by embedding a culture of challenges and continual improvement. So we, we, we're not going to details of the history, but we can just read through. Now, ISO 45001, for many of us I don't know, was initially OSA 18001, which was initially a version 1999. Yeah, that means that that was the first time. 1999 was the first time it was, it was established, OSA 18, OSA 18001, 1999. Then eight years later, it was updated review to OSA 2007. That's 2001, 2007, that is eight years later. Is, and these are the predecessors to the current ISO that we, that we have, that now incorporate the high-level structure. The other standard was recognized internationally, but it is not an ISO standard. It is not an ISO, so it was not developed by ISO, it was a requirement, it was a standard that was widely recognized. So ISO came up with the review to embed it into, into the, into their international standard. Over time, it became, it because, has become increasingly apparent that too many workers are suffering from ill health issues, injuries and the likes, placing a non-admissible burden on people, their families and with moral and welfare costs. So we all know all this basis of why we need to improve health and safety. This was recognized and here, there's a need to have a systematic structure for managing these activities. And that is why the standard came into play, the ISO standard, as of 45001, which give about, which leads to greater compatibility with other existing standard. Like I've said, you can easily integrate. So anytime you hear management system integration, it is because you can easily integrate all these ISO standard, 9001, 4001, 5001. Before it was not possible. It's just like saying that you want to, want to integrate lean production or you want to integrate, let's say Six Sigma, Lean Six Sigma or the like, I want to integrate it with, with OSA or want to integrate it with, let's say the ISO, the SON, SON Act, something like that. Because of the, the structures are not the same, it would be very difficult for you to bring them together as a single entity. But the ISO standard has come in such a way that it has become, it has made it possible to blend these things together, to have a single management system. So there are so many benefit of ISO standard, it helps you to manage your processes. And it's a demonstration of, when you implement ISO standard, as well as 45001, it shows that you are committed to preventing injuries. It, it shows that you are very concerned about the health and safety of your workers. And it's a means to also, it, it, it also helps you to reduce cost. Because when accident happens, the cost of accident is never quantifiable. You, you can never know the true cost of accident. So these are basics. So we, we may not go into all these benefits of ISO standard. Now, let us start with the PDC cycle, even though we have done something like this before, we can do a recap. When we talk about the PDC cycle, we are talking about the plan, the duty, check and act. Which is the system that has been adopted by ISO generally for the management system, which also include ISO 45001. And they have adopted the four stages, the planning, the face, the planning phase, the do phase, the check phase and the act phase, the plan, the do, the check and the act. So. This has been put together to achieve continual improvement and is an inherent part of the systematic approach to determine working solutions. What are those things? What should we put in place to ensure that we're able to address a particular issue, a particular risk? Remember we talked about the risk-based approach. Your clause four, your clause six talks about risk and re, and that clause is, like I said, it gives rise to other clauses. For example, you, you, you have a risk, maybe you are, you are a company that is into lifting operation. So you know your risk that you might face. One of those risks is the, the lifting operation itself. There's a risk of, there's a risk of equipment damage, equipment falling from height, the, the object being lifted, falling on people, causing damage. That is a risk. So because of that risk, you are able to know the kind of resources that you put in place, which the standard has also given us a framework for the resources. So that is the part of, that is support. That is why your clause seven, if you look at your standard, your clause, we'll talk about support. Why are those support that you need to address those risks? Because when you have identified that risk, clauses talk about risk and action to address, to, to control the risk, to address those risk actions that you need to put in place. So you need to talk about those actions. Then clause 6.2, that talks about the objective and action to achieve those objective. So since you know that, but the risk, part of the risk that you face is the risk of item falling from height and causing damage to the equipment that you are lifting or damage to the environment or even fatality, then you are now put resources in place to be able to implement those control measures that, that you have established. Then clause eight, that talks about the operation. How do you actually implement those things to actually prevent those accidents? To actually build a safety culture. So you see that it works hand in hand. And when you look at the planning, it said, understanding the context of the organization. I'm trying to bring it from the angle of risk, because most times when we hear the word risk-based approach, risk-based approach, we tend to wonder, what does it mean? It means that you are looking at it from the angle of risk. What are the various risks that, that you can come up with? And that's why clause six talks about risk, risk, six point one, action to address those risks. Actions to address it. And that is the main part of planning. That is the main planning. Have you identified every risk? But how do you, how do you identify the risk? The kind of safety, health and safety risk that will be in a warehouse facility or facility management organization, it will differ from the kind of risk that will be present. It will differ from the kind of risk. It, it, it will be different from the kind of risk that will be in an oil and gas firm. It is different from the kind of risk that will be present in a banking firm. Different from the kind of risk that will be present in a logistic firm. It will be different from the kind of risk that will be present in a transport company firm. Different from the kind of risk that will be present in an hospital. So different organizations have different kind of risks that are presented. That is why clause four now comes first. As context of the organization, you need to understand the context of the organization to be able to know the kind of risk you are addressing in clause six. Are we communicating? So that is why clause four comes first as understanding the, the context of the organization. The four point one, that talks about understanding the organization and its context, what is the context of the organization? What do they do in the organization? What is, what is it that is about? What are the issues? The internal and external issues that the organization is all about? When you're working, you should, the kind of, the context of an aviation company like Ubom Air, Nigeria Air, so many of them, it is different from the kind of context that will be in a transportation company like TSL. They have different contexts. So you need to understand, that's why it comes first. Context of the organization. So in this context, we're able to know the kind of risk that you'll be talking about. And this context, we're able to know the kind of objective that you'll be setting for yourself. As understanding the context of the organization, including objectives and opportunities. Establish each objective, processes and resources required to deliver results in accordance to the organization's policy. So at the end of the day, when you look at the, the starting point, which is the context, when you go to your point one, they will tell you that this particular point one, it will still be necessary to, 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 to help you in understanding your risk that you identify in clause six. So if you, if you read through clause six, they will tell you that you, you need to consider clause 4.1, clause 4.2 and even 4.3, because they talk about processes. Processes is about 4.4, but 4.3 is about the scope. So you see that, you see how they link up together and that structure helps us to prevent accidents. Because by then you're able to, to know your context, you, you'll be able to know what and what are, what, what, what are the risks that we can be facing because of this context of the organization? The internal issues, the internal risk and the external issues that, that you can face. The four point two, that talks about the interested parties. The interested parties in the vision firm, in the, in the vision industry, we do it for the, the, the interested parties in the mining industry. We have from the, we have from the, from the interested party that will present in the oil and gas firm, in the packing firm. There are different interested parties when it comes to health and safety. Some are generic, for example, Ministry of Labor and Employment. The, the factories, the personnel department, the factories are, that one, those ones are generic, but there are some that are very specific. They're talking about the NMDPR. They are talking about, NMDPR, for example, you know, mostly they talk about the oil and gas. If you're talking about NIMSA, they're talking about the, the mining industry. So if a aviation act, you're talking about the aviation industries, everyone may, will later have some specific interested parties. You're understanding your interested parties because these data parties, we have their own interest when it comes to health and safety. For example, the Aviation Act, the regulation that, that it applies to therefore health and safety, that is specific to them. And in, I define your, your clause six point one, it's talking about the action to address risk. You will specifically need to address the risk that those interested parties have already defined. That is why you must, we must ensure that you capture as much interested party as possible and you must understand what their needs are when it comes to addressing health and safety issues in that particular industry. Are we communicating? If you are together, please type yes in the chat room. So many point in the, in the waiting room. If, if you are together, please type yes in the chat room. Let me know that we are together in this class. Are we together, please? If you are together, just type yes in the chat room. Don't unmute yourself. Are we together, please? If you are together, just type yes in the chat room, don't unmute yourself. Alright, alright, that's very important. Then once you have been able to understand your context and part of your planning is clause four. Part of your planning is clause five, that talks about the policy. That talks about the commitment of the management, the policy that they set as an organization. When they set the policy, then the four point, the five point three that talks about those and responsibility. Because when you say you will do this, you will do this, you will do that, yeah, it is people that will do it. So you need to ensure that there's a structure to know who is doing what. In order to achieve what we want to achieve. You can say that I want to prevent this, we want to do this, we shall do this, we shall do that, we shall do that, we are committed to blah 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 blah. There must be roles and responsibilities for to align with it, to align with your goals, who is doing what. That's why five point three talks about rules and responsibility, the five point four now talks about worker participation. Then do, implementing the processes, implementing what you have said you implement. You talk about action to address risk and opportunity. In the in the in the do phase, you are implementing those actions. You are you are generating records. Most times in 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 the in management system, we have three documents, three major documents. We call it uh procedures, forms and. Uh I've I've forgotten the third one, there are majorly three documents. We have pro- uh procedures, we have forms, forms are what you use to generate document, to generate records. We have your procedures and I've forgotten the third one, the actual theory at every time that we that I wish to make reference to. You know, not checklist, not checklist is part of the forms that you use. I I've I've forgotten the the term that we call it, there's a professional term that we call it. Maybe i- if I, if I remember, I I'm currently developing some document for. Let me see if if it's if it's there. And plans, I think it's plan, 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 yes. Procedure, forms and plans, plans, procedure, platforms and procedures, I went to those it's. So let me continue. So sometimes you have plan, you have your H S E plan, you have your uh a risk. Your control measures, your plan that you have, your your robust plan. Another one is to have your procedures in place. In order to meet up with what you have planned and you have forms that you use from time to time. To ensure that you are carrying out those plans as, uh those procedures as you have planned. So these are part of the 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 other. The other forms of document that we make use of, but let's go on to the main discourse of today. So that your your check is where is where you where you evaluate and monitor the processes and your act is when you ensure continual improvement. So when we go down here, we will now under, you now see how they put it, they put this in context. You'll see that the leadership is at the center, orbital. The leadership, so it means that when you want to implement uh standard, ISO standard, it it starts from the leadership. It starts from the commitment of the management. And how they engage the workers, you want to talk about action to address risks, there's the need to engage the worker, worker participation. There's a need to engage the workers, worker participation. You you talk they, they talk about leadership, then from there you now talk about. The other parts, but the center of it all is the leadership, that ensures that every other thing goes well. Then you see the planning phase, the clauses where you carry out the planning. Which is the actual, the the starting point, but you can't just plan without understanding clause four, which is the context that I spoke about the other time. Then the the six, the planning, then from the planning, you have clause seven that talks about support. Your support are your, what what we call the R C A C D, the resources. Com- competence, the resources that is needed, depending on uh for health and safety, the resources that are needed, the human resources. Material resources that they need to provide, then the C, the competency. Then the awareness that is necessary, the communication channels, internal and external communication and documented information. Then from there, you now have the performance evaluation of clause nine, then improvement clause ten. And what is the outcome of O S management system? Why are you implementing O S management system? You are implementing it basically to reduce accident, to prevent accident, to prevent accident. To prevent accident and to improve the health and safety culture. So there's a need to establish O S objective process and and resources required to deliver result in accordance with the policy of the organization. So the context comes first, because those are what we've, what you feeding into the process. You see the whole plan to check out. Do what what will help you to to be able to, it is what you're feeding, it is what you have understood as a context, but because like I said. The context of an oil and gas firm, the way you run the management system of an oil and gas firm might be different from the way you run the management system of. Of an aviation firm, that is why it is it is structured like this. It is what you're feeding as the context that will determine how the operation will go. And the kind of risk that you identify, the kind of control that you put in place, because all risks are not the same. All risks are different depending on the industry that they fall into. So, risk based thinking. Any company that operates an O S management system must ensure that there is an effective measure. To evaluate performance which enables continual improvement internally. This section outlines the different methodologies of auditing in relation to the O S management system to ensure it is effective. At all level of the organization and meets the requirements of the standard. Now, audit is very important, that is why even in, if want to do, let's say you want to carry out certification for your organization for five thousand and one. One of those major requirements is 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 nine point two, audit. You must carry out internal audit. You must carry out internal audit. So it means that as a pro, as an organization, if you really want to know the gaps. But th- those are the easiest way to know if you have gap. Yes, we do gap analysis. Want to implement management system, they will tell you, go and do gap analysis. Look at where you want, what want to achieve, what is standards is, look at what you have in your organization and look at the gaps. And try to, and try to look out for creative actions to close them out. Internal audit is also one of those ways. Carry out internal audit of your process, look at what the standard says. Then from what the standard says, look at your non-conformities and start correcting those non-conformities. So that will, that will help you to be able to implement the requirements of the standard. So the risk based thinking approach is the central tenet of ISO four zero zero one. We're talking about the R B T, which is risk based thinking. It requires that management team continually assess the risk that affect their health and safety. Of the organization and ensure that appropriate target, resources and controls are in place. So they must always ensure that there is, there are prayers in place. Well, how do we meet up this, this, how do we do this? How do we carry out this? That's why the clause nine point one measurement is very, very important. You set objective, when you look at many of us, we will come across on some checklist. So it will come across, you know, not checklist, it will come across on some some Excel sheet. That they write L T I is zero, uh near miss, unsafe act, unsafe condition, trainings. You do do sometimes the management, they might separate them from lagging indicators and leading indicators. Those indicators are not just there. You will see fatalities, first aid case, permanent disability, you will see those metrics there. Those parameters are not are not just there for 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 being their sake, thank you, statistics. Those parameters are not just there for being their sake, it is because so that they can tie, they can set targets for themselves. And ensure that they meet up with those targets. Because when they don't meet up with those targets, then they will look at what is the gap, what are we missing? Is it that there are resources that we need to, uh we need to source for, for us to be able to, to to meet up with our targets? And ensure that there are control measures in place. R B T and power relations will make dynamic changes to their objectives and focus. While at the same time, ensuring that resources are in place to control changes and not focus on circumstances. Now, there is a concept of continual improvement. You can't set a policy and not talk and they will be move of continual improvement. You can't set a process, a procedure, S O P, without element of continual improvement, that must be there. Because there can be changes that you need to address. Which is also part of the requirement of the standard too. So in relation to the O S management system. Risk based thinking extends to areas outside the organization which may influence safety. For example, procurement of products and services, if you want to procure P P E, for example. You can't say because uh you are, you are, you are giving an external uh a a subcontractor. To, you are giving it a subcontractor the opportunity to help you to supply P P E. Doesn't mean that you will not create, you not establish your requirement on what you want them to supply for you. There must be, there must be requirement that must be set and that must be met. So those requirements must be established, it's part of the process. Even though it is ISO nine thousand and one that specifically focus on. Uh control, control of our source processes, it doesn't mean that at the means of engaging contractors. Contracting, because even ISO nine thousand and one, even ISO four thousand and one talks about contractor engagement. How do you engage your contractors? It is a very important part of health and safety. So when they are supplying you P P E, for example, you should understand the impact of their supply. If they don't supply the right quality of product, what will happen? You want to engage, uh you want to get a a a crane for lifting the operation. You you need to know what does, you can see where the context of the. Organization comes into play, because at that point, you need to understand the 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 interested parties. Your legal requirement, what are the losses when you want, when you want to use an A V D T equipment? Okay, it will be certified by by Ministry of uh, I think, the the particular ministry. Administration of Transportation that helps you to certify your A V D T equipment. So all these are part of those requirements of the standard, that must be well implemented. So for operational aspect, the standard clearly defines the hierarchy of controls for other identification. And reduction of risk with involvement of workers. One of those questions that I used to get every time. Is that people will come to ask me that, Mr. Wali, I came across this control measure, this hierarchy of control. One is talking about the air safety, uh then then uh the substitution. Then uh additive control, then they 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 talk about signage separately, but. When it comes to ISO standard, if you go to the ISO standard, the ISO standard gives us five, gave us five, which is elimination substitution. Additive engineering control, additive control and P P E. Now, there are other standards too, there are other structures too, but the 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 idea is still the same. It is it is it is in process safety that you was talk about, I think, air safety first. Then before now talk about substitution, then other ones now follow. But at the, at the, at the, at the center of occupational health and safety. Because ISO four five zero zero one is addressing occupational health and safety, not process safety. So the hierarchy of safety is the general that you see, those five that you see every time. Elimination, substitution, engineering, additive control and P P E. There another aspect of you being able to implement your standard is the first party order that you have talked about. Now, this is another, there there are there are some other kind of misconceptions also. Now, when it comes to certification audit. When it comes to certification audit, I won't talk about different kind of audits, so I won't do, I won't waste time on that. When it comes to certification audit, there are two parts. The first party, there's thirty, the stage one and the stage two. That is the uh documentation audit and the full system audit. It's quite different from parties, because many times people confuse party and studies. When it comes to first party audit, first party audit is a kind of internal audit that you do for yourself. Whether you engage a con- a a consultant or you do it yourself, it's still internal audit. Some people think that whenever they engage a consultant, because if I ask that question now, you start seeing confusion. You will believe that whenever you engage a consultant to come and help you to audit your process, that is the second party audit, no, it is still first party audit. The first party audit is one of those ways that you can use to understand your process. Internal audit are taken at a moment in a time to determine if policies and practices are effective. You're trying to see how well you are implementing your system. These are ways to help you to properly implement the requirement of the standard. Then walkthrough audit, there are times that you just carry out the U T A. You just do workout, you just walk around, you you can call it inspection. A less formal approach may be adopted in addition to the audit by conducting walkthrough audit. This may be conducted by senior leadership to show their commitment. And this are other opportunities to also engage workers. When you carry out walkthrough, it means that you are not only implementing. Uh five point one that talks about leadership and commitment. You are also implementing clause five point four that talks about work, work participation, because you can use the opportunity. While you are walking around to also be able to consult with the workers, engage them, discuss with them and document these things. Then you also use the opportunity to, to address this point one, identifying this risk. Other identification, when when you go to six point one point one, six point two, seven point three, they'll talk about. I I other identification, risk assessment and action to address this risk. And addressing changes that could occur, because there can be changes in your risk. You can be using a particular equipment now and maybe after some time you change it to a new equipment. So once you change that equipment to a new equipment, there there can be changes. So those changes, you need to address them. A new risk can come up, any other that can come up. For example, you you change your forklifts, let me ask that question generally. You 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 are you are using, yes, opportunities as well, yes, you are using. A diesel power forklift to carry out lifting, to carry out lifting operation to to transfer material from one place to another. Then you now change, because of environmental sustainability, you now change those diesel forklifts to battery powered forklift. Who can tell me a new risk that, yes, there's a new opportunity. There's less emission, less smokes, ill health issues is reduced. But who can tell me the, a new risk that you have introduced because of that? Because of that, because of the battery power forklift that I have introduced, who can tell us?
Explosion. Thank you. Battery charging.
Yeah, explosion while charging, yeah, electrocution, because of the electricity that is being used. Yes, battery explosion due to hydrogen, thank you, hydrogen emission, because you have introduced a new risk. That's why you need to plan for changes that could occur. How do you manage your changes? And that very important one that I that, that is called, that is very silent. And and I want to is actually literally silent, is that battery powered forklifts do not make noise. They are very quiet and that means that when forklifts are operating. People, when it, when you are using the diesel power forklift, people can still hear the noise behind them, they can still hear the noise. So it can allow them that a diesel, a diesel, a diesel forklift, a forklift is passing or it's coming by behind me. But this, you see this, this um, this. Battery powered, they are very quiet, silent, now they have reduced noise. But they have introduced possibility of collision, thank you, Mr. Bello. They have in- introduced possibility of collision, meaning that you need to address that. You, there's a new risk, so you need to review your control measure. So how do you address it? Ensure that you train communication, training is part of ways to address changes. Competence is part of ways to address changes. Then you now put these blind spot mirrors to a convex mirrors to to an. Have the awareness that people must always look at the convex mirror when going through corners. When those forklifts operators who are operating that equipment, they must be trained and competent to understand that. There's a risk that's approached, because when we, when we talk about competency in the context of health and safety. Many people think that competency does about the person being able to drive. Or be the person being able to operate the equipment, ah, it's good, you know, you know that's operated equipment. No, competency extend those beyond that. When when you go, you go to standard, the 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 standard, there are three, three areas that they talk about when it when it comes to competency. There's a education, training and experience or experience. Competence on the basis of training, education or experience. So experience in health and safety means that not only being able to operate the equipment, but being able to operate it safely. So and when there are changes, you need to review that, and that's where the H R will now come in also. You can say that it's an integrated system, it is not what, what person will do in isolation, when you are implementing the system, the standard. It means that you need to now review the process again. And look at, okay, the H R needs to come in at this point. We need to train our staff on a new change in our equipment, in our processes, so so and so. For them to be up to date, because the ISO standard plus one point two requires that competency must be periodically evaluated. And any changing need, the competency must be addressed alongside the change in the risk that occur. And or another way is second party audit, external audit. When you, when uh you you have a contractor, you have contractors. You have vendors that supply equipment, you have contractors that carry out activities and you carry out second party audits. Auditing there to ensure that they meet up with your requirements and they meet up with legal requirements. Legal requirements, compliance oblig- Legal requirements, compliance obligation, which is another conception or misconception that I want to address. We're talking about legal obligation or compliance obligation, it's not only about the regulatory, it's not only about the regulatory bodies. It's not only about factories, it's not only about N M D P R E, it's only about the petroleum act or the M A T A act or N A D A act. When you sign a contract. When you sign a contract, let's say with you, you are a contractor, you sign a contract with, with your client. That you would prevent accidents by doing so, so, so and so, that is also a compliance obligation. That is also a legal requirement, so legal requirement is not only limited. It's not only limited to uh your regulatory bodies that you see, when you sign a contract, it's legal by the legal tender. That contract document is illegal binding and whatever is written there, it becomes a legal requirement. And in the case of, if you go through ISO point thousand one, what is being used most, more, more there is compliance obligation, they literally almost, they, they miss almost the same thing. The other means is the top party audit, top party audit when you now become certified. Maybe you now become certified with body like N Q A, like I said. I've made, made clear that this document is not owned by us, it is owned by N Q A, which is a certification body. So there are many certification bodies in this world, but because I'm using their document and I know measure every down, but we know that there are so many. So let us give them that credence for using their documents. For this particular purpose, their audit planning, how you plan your audit, this class is not for planning audit, I think you have done a session like that. On audit planning also, you can go through our, 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 our YouTube channel to, 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 to update yourself on that. Now, there are, there are ten clauses or the quality sessions, whatever you call it. Now, the one that you implement, the audit table is from clause four, clause five, clause six, clause seven, clause eight, clause nine, clause ten. And I've always said it, clause four is talking about the context of the organization. Is the, is that the system focus on the process and requirement need to be achieved, need to achieve policy objective. This is achieved by understanding the location and the context in which it operates. The clause sets how the requirement for the organization to define the scope of the system and the sub, and the subsequent planning of the system. Now, what we are, all this jargon written here is this clause four helps us to know what is happening in the organization. Is what is obvious, when you go to a company, you see what they are doing, now putting it in context, putting it in, in written form. Now, four point three actually is where we are going to. For, for those that have gone through the standard of, of, for our delegate that I've said our class. Four point three is where we are going to, that talks about the scope of the management system. But you can't understand the scope of the management system when you don't understand the context and interested parties. Because it's the combination of the context of the organization and the interested party that will determine the scope of their management system. The scope is actually what they do, for example, a construction company or let's say a, an engineering company. I think, I think into excavation, drilling, uh fabrication. Installation of, of fire and dry system, I, I love using that example very well, I don't know why. Fire and dry system or a company that is into uh. Laying and termination of, of a, a laying installation and termination of electrical systems. They are, they are into electrical works, so what they do that they write out. Exploration of oil, of crude oil, so coming into exploration, that states where, that is their, that is their scope, four point three. But you can't talk about discovery, you don't understand the context and the interested parties. There are four point four that talks about the processes that are in place, it is what you now see in the, for example, you see H S E plan. You know, some H S E manual, the detail of the processes that they go through from one point to another to achieve. What they do in the organization, so clause five to ten are common to all management system standard. I so one specifically relate to health and safety, so while there is a commonality. There are all processes to be established, implemented and maintained, including understanding the policy framework, which is clause five. And maintaining, and men, and maintaining, including understanding. The point and I, 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 I mean of I S R, which is clause six point one. Management controls of management control of risk and worker participation. They are, they successfully, successfully de- deployed. And it also enables an integration management to other standard. So all this jargon that, that, that is said here is, is simply for you to understand that. This structure from clause five, from clause four to clause ten. They are similar across other standard and that's why it is easy to integrate them, you will see that similar, uh that similarity. Now, looking at this. The plan phase. Is clause four, five, six, now most times. And most times, the do phase, we all, we put it under this plus seven, which is support, we put it under the do phase. And the reason is that the do is actually the operation, but you need this support to be in place to carry out those operation. Like a common example that I used to, that I used to say, you want to cook your rice. You have plan on the ingredient, how you go and buy the ingredient, the time that you buy the ingredient. The, uh, the, maybe you call, you book Uber around this time, the market moment that you go to meet, where you branch. The type of Google that you buy, the kind of rice that you buy, the kind of pepper that you buy, the kind of maggi that you use. Already listed them, how you cook it, okay, I'll first fry the oil, and I'll put the pepper, I'll, I'll put the, I'll first fry the oil. And I'll put the steel, then I'll put the, the meat that I want to put in it, and I'll put the maggi, and I allow you to fry. And after a minute, I'll, I'll wash the rice, I'll, I'll boil the rice before, and I will now pu- put the rice inside the. Inside the, what's it called? Inside the, inside the pot, then I'll stand it together, I'll, I'll allow the rice to fly and mix together and mix together with the steel. And I now pour water and allow it to done and I'll check periodically. And at each stage, okay, I'll use no smarts, I will use something to lift the pot when it is hot. I'll do, you already said that procedure, when I'm going to go and buy this thing, I will ensure that I do not over body myself. I use Uber or someone who are sending to carry the load, you already, you already planned. Those one, all what I'm saying now is still what is your brain, it, it, it's not the reality. You've already planned it, even though as I'm saying, it's already pictured in their brain, I've already, you have already planned it. Then the support is what you now want to use to implement those that you have planned. And the standard has given us a guide, the clause seven, seven point one, the resources that, that will be needed. Seven point two, the competency that is needed to achieve, to achieve that objective that you have set. Your objective, you want to cook is sweet Nigerian jollof rice and not a Ghanaian jollof rice. Because everyone might want to cook jollof rice that is Nigerian and they end up cooking jollof rice that is only attributed to one part of Nigeria. I don't want to mention name, so please, there, there between Nigerian jollof and a part of Nigerian tribe jollof. So you go to cook Nigerian jollof, there's a way it looks. So at the end of the day, there's a competency need to achieve that, there's a resources. So people will, so people, you, 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 you say you want to eat jollof, but you are eating oil. Because too many resources is too much and, and there, there, there's no competency, resources, some maggi will not be there. There will not be enough maggi, there will not be enough salt, some the paper will too much. It's not only about the resources, it's about the competence, please let us stay muted.
Okay.
It is, it's about the competency required to achieve those, that particular taste that you want to, you, 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 you want to get. Then the awareness. Then the com- communication channels, communication between you and the woman that you want to get it externally. Between you and the woman that you want to go and buy the paper from, I want to go and buy the ingredients from, communication between you and your vendors. And the internal communication between you and your staff that will set up the pot that will do everything. Then seven point five documenting your processes, documenting, how do you document them? Now, this same applies to an organization formally, press organization that is producing, that is into manufacturing, the same project, the same idea. So the clause seven, you are actually doing those things in clause seven. But they are like the support system to enable you to actually implement it fully. By the time you talk about competency requirement, by that you start checking for H R, you, you start recruiting people. They start talking about operation because they are already recruiting them. The means of recruit, uh recruitment of those who are competent to actually meet up with your set objective that you have set is very important. So everything must be in line with the objective, meeting up with the objective that you have set for yourself and addressing the risk that comes with it. Then clause eight, that talks about the operation, then clause nine, that talks about performance evaluation, then clause ten, talk about improvement. So all this, uh, scope one, the, the section one is talking about the internal outcome of the management system, we all know this. The school amendments there is to reduce, provide a safe, a safe, a healthy environment, prevent workplace injuries. Proactively monitor and improve your performance in health and safety, eliminate hazard, uh take advantage of opportunities. Fulfill legal requirement, achieve your objective, these are the general scope of the management system. Then nominative reference is telling us about the, 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 a commonality. Of the ISO standard, so in this case, for ISO thousand one, they are, they are not, they are not a nominative reference. If applicable to a standard, nominative references are essential document used for the application of the document. In other words, the reference document is considered essential for the application of the reference standard. I so four five zero zero one provide a biography with further information, including as I stated, I so M A standard. I'm a standard, so in this case, there is no nominative reference for I so four five zero zero one. Then terms and definitions, you come across so many terms in health and safety, in, in, in the document. You'll be getting terms like risk, objective, policy, continual improvement, no conformity. Conformity, uh interested parties, contractor, what are the meaning of these terms? That is what they just put there in, in the, in the third one, in the section three. Then section four is now when you talk about the context of the organization and I've told us what that means. Four point one, clarity of the strategic aim of the organization. And determine any issue that could affect the aim being achieved, what is the aim of the organization? What are those issues that could affect it internally? You have your equipment, you have, you are into production of flammable items, internal issue, uh explosion, fire. What are the internal issues that you can come across in your organization? The externally with interested parties, with the community, do you, do what you are doing, how does it affect? The external people externally, internal issues and external issues. It can be positive or negative as the case may be, then four point two, consider the condition of interested parties, including the workers. Internal interested party and external interested parties and how they can affect how the organization operates. There are some, for example, division act now, individual industrial division act, your interested parties, your N C A A, they can affect you. The addition that can affect your, your interested parties, have you put them into consideration? Have you been able to highlight them, then this scope, four point three, setting the scope of the management system from the information discussed. And considering four point two and four point two, for those that have been with us at the beginning of the class, they will remember that we talk about four point three. Being a product of both four point two and four point two, then four point four, laying out a design of the old management system and the high level planning around it. How you now plan the, the processes, your, your processes from beginning to the end and the other cities around it. So you, you realize that this is giving you the basis of the organization. Everything that has to do to organization is what clause four helps us to address. Defining the organization and what can affect it, understanding the interested parties, the scope. The scope of the management system and design the sequence of the processes. So we're talking about interested parties now, what, what are we talking about? Quickly, we have the, sorry, we are talking about the context of the organization, we are talking about the external and internal issues. Internally, you're talking about the, the culture, the city culture of the organization. The politics in the organization, the financial consideration of the organization, the technological integration of the organization. Is there, is, is, are, are there processes, are, are they fully automated systems? Or there is a low level of human engagement, human interaction, economic, oh, this is external. Economic, culture, politics, and most times we use what we call, what's it called? Uh, pest two, I, I, I was initially defining it as internal. Pest two, political, economic, socio, technological, legal and environment. Natural surrounding, including the environment in which they operate, the community where they operate, they are competitors, these are external. Who are, who their competitors, their competitors are and any contractors, contractors, their suppliers, their vendors, their partners, this is external. National laws, international laws, industry drivers and trends which are influence of the, of the organization. The, the organization products and services and their influence on operational health and safety, then the internal issues. The structure internally of the organization, how is the organogram like? For example, in the health and safety, did they report to the, to the C E O or they report to the H R? Because that, that will give you an insight on the kind of internal issues that they have, what is their structure like? You see that they just have only one H S U officer or for every level, there is an engagement of a safety personnel. How do they introduce it into their processes? The policy, the objective and the strategies in place to achieve them, these are internal issues. The resources that they need, the competency, the culture of the organization, the process for introduction of new products and the likes. All these are part of your internal and external issues. The standard will not tell you to document them, but you need them, that does it, maybe I should, I should tell you that. The standard will not tell you to, 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 to implement them, to document them, but you need, you need to document them. So sometimes documentation can be formal document and sometimes it can be, for example, your interested parties can be in form of a map. It can be in form of a table, interested parties, internal interested parties and external interested parties. Your customers, your workers, the interested parties, your suppliers, the interested parties. Your top parties, the interested parties, your contractors, your regulators, they are all your interested parties. So sometimes they can, they can use the word stakeholders. They can use the word stakeholders, unlike other common standard, this clause introduces the term workers. Which is a broad term as described in the section three of the terms, terms and definitions, so they define what workers are. So all these are part of your interested parties, however, define who your interested parties are. I so for that, that requires that you determine their potential and actual effect, how do they affect your process? So some, their decision can affect you, some they can, they are, they are, they are just influencers. Some, they can, they, you know, we have this stakeholders matrix, you, you, you can take your time to go through it because of time. Now, four point three now talks about the scope of the management system, what they do, if you look at the example here. You said the manufacture and sales of dishwasher, that, that is the scope. You just mentioned the main processes, which will incorporate many processes, including workers machinery. So identify the main processes and highlighting them is what your scope talks about. And you can always define your scope based on your context and your four point two, so from the context. Information gathering in four point, four point two. The scope and interested parties in four point two can be, and the scope can be developed. The scope set out the areas of the business that are going to be managed in the old management system. Where are those areas that you, that you'll be talking about the health and safety? Usually this include the key processes and activities that are engaged in the service of production of the goods. Including any customer facing activity and put delivery warranty works, if your, if your activity includes, includes delivery. Production, yeah, it, it can even be manufacturing, warehousing and delivery of. And delivery of, let me say, napkins or delivery of pampas, whatever you produce or delivery of food. Food items. Homemade food items, whatever you use that you produce, just mentioning this is what your scope talk about. Therefore, point four now talks about your processes, telling us the process that is involved in achieving those, your scope that you have mentioned. That is the activity that is embedded in your process. For, from the point of gathering, four point twelve, four point two, four, four point three, the standard requires the design and integration of the processes. Within the management system to satisfy the requirement of ISO thousand zero one, this may include such processes as design and development, procurement, marketing and manufacturing. Therefore, point two talks about policy, they need to, there's, there's a way your policy should look like. There's a way your policy should look like. Your policy has, when you go to clause six, clause five point two, they tells you the minimum thing that you be in the policy. The funny example of how leadership can be demonstrated within the old management system, the standard has, has already highlighted those things for you. Promote communication, protect work. Promote communication, protect workers, provide support, take over responsibility for health and safety, provide, providing a safe environment. The standard specifically mentioned that your, your policy should include commitment to certain objectives. So you must, that if you go through your policy and it doesn't have these six things that are here, then the policy is not complete. Provide a proper framework for certain objective, provide a safe and healthy working condition to prevent as a ill health and injuries. Eliminate hazard and reduce risk, continually improve, you can see, I was mentioning about continual improvement. If, if your statement does not include continual improvement, then it's not complete. It doesn't include continual improvement, then it's not complete, it must include continual improvement. Consulting the workers and part of workers and fulfillment of legal and other requirements. If this is not there, then the policy document is not complete, it's incomplete. And that is where, it's not only about asking if they have a policy, is it reflecting the reality of what the standard says? And that's where clause seven point five comes in, that talks about documented information. At the doc, how the content of that document is incomplete in line with what the standard says to be there at minimum. Because that will force them to implement it, because once they have it there, they must implement it. They must set objectives in line with it at minimum and they must implement it unless they are not implementing the ISO standard. Once the policy has been approved, it must be communicated. If you go through your same clause five point two, it talks about communicating the policy. How did I choose the, how did I choose to communicate it internally and externally now, 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 now? Stand with them, but the, the means of confusion must be effective and it must be addressing the need. And it was a review periodically and that is where clause nine point three comes in, you can see how this standard are working. Nine point three talks about management review, your review must include review of the policy. Then five point three now talks about roles and responsibility, who is doing what at the particular point. That is where the H R comes in, setting objectives, setting a job description and communicating it with the workers to know the line of authority. The rules and of, of every individual. Then workers consultation, a very important part because it's very peculiar to, to, to ISO five, five, zero, zero, one. Consulting the workers and ensuring participation of workers. Periodical, periodic meetings, they must engage the workers, safety committee meetings, they, they should, and these are suggestions. Safety committee meetings, helping to eliminate hazard, communication of near misses, near miss reporting. Cross communication, developing a system of work and instruction, toolbox, open the policy, suggestion boxes. Notice board, all these are means of engaging the workers and this are part of the things that you should implement as a process owner. Then you add, add identification. Which is your clause six point one. You must plan the action based on risk assessment. Definitely, what we call RAMS is a requirement of the ISO standard. It is not what you choose, it's a requirement of the ISO standard, that you must have your RAMS. Your RAMS, not only developing risk assessment, but also including control measures. And the standard now brings them down to two, hazard identification, how do you identify your hazard? It can be true, it can be true tight walk through, it can be, and it must, and it must do it in line with five point four, workers engagement. And this is basics of planning process to prioritize action to address each opportunity using the hierarchy of control. So group, group of workers exposed to hazard, you must consider them. Shift work, hours, lone working, that, that now, this is where the scope will come in. Because understanding your interest, your, 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 your context, if you are the guy that do twenty-four hour operation, you must include that reality into your other identification. Human factors, wha- wha- what are the range of categorization of human that you have? Men have peculiar need, women have peculiar need. If you have those children around you, if, if it's less than an hospital now. Because a hospital, because it's not only manufacturing company that, that can implement that, a hospital can also im- implement ISO standard. Now, in the case of a hospital, they need to design their hospital and address the issue in line with the fact that you have old people. You have young people, you have children and they must address every safety need. So the standard encompasses the different categorization of an organization that can come into play when it comes to health and safety. Then the hierarchy of controls, you, you, you already know that already. So these are ways to implement the control measures. You must understand that we are addressing your six point two and you must also take, like I said, you must also take it into con- consideration, legal requirement. Because there's a requirement, there's some risks that will have been mentioned already by the law that you must address it. So it's part of what you, you put into consideration, they're setting your objective in line with what you have say you will do. So, once we are done with this class, I'm going to, I'm going to share this document in this group only, in this, in this meeting only, I, I, I may not share it in groups. I, I'm going to drop it, once we are done with this class, I, I, I want us to run a very soon because of time, uh, the, the, the time is already fast spent. Or, or you want me to continue? So once we are done, I'm, I'm going to send the document to the chat from here. So part of the requirement is clause six point two that talks about objectives. Objectives and once we are done with this objective, this we are going to stop today. Hopefully by next year, by God's grace, by God's grace next year. We will be, will be by, because we are ready for this year, I may still want to do one more in order to finish this session. I didn't know it would be as much detailed as this. So maybe before the end of the year, we can do the second part or better still, we'll start on that note, we'll continue the, the mini part. Next year by God's grace, uh, that will be our first enlightenment series or hopefully you may still do it this year. So, but let us complete this part, but I, I'm, I'm not the type that like mi- uh, missing out important part. Now, kind of live document may include the following information on, on the risk assessment. Most of us, we already know how uh our risk assessment looks like. Name and reference number of regulation, if there are regulatory requirement, revised, revised status, date, the regulation was last reviewed. That is talking about issues that has to do with legal requirements. If there's a new document that was reviewed and that's where your four point two interested parties, you must always, uh, uh, ensure that you update your interested parties requirement. As, as required, so there are this document, you will call it legal register. That legal register must contain this detail to be, to follow up and update your legal requirement. Area of the relation, the, the requirement impacts, including a short description of activities. And as you said, documented information, a hyperlink of description of the source of information, name of customers, date, all this are just a template to tell you. How the reference for individual assessment will be like when it comes to legal requirement. Then objectives that you set also is very, very important. Is the requirement of the standard that you set achievable objectives, smart objectives, remember for a smart objective. Specific measurable achievable realistic and time bound. It's if, if, if many requirements have been identified, the organization may consider developing a documented. Health and safety strategic plan, this plan should be agreed by senior leadership and include this rating task. So you must set objectives. Your, your objective are what you want to achieve in the organization, when it comes to your policy that you have set. Your dinner responsibilities come part of the objective, ensuring the abilities and their responsibility, you must specify it's part of objectives. Method in which the action can be achieved. The actual thing that you want to okay, reducing. Re- reducing P P related issues, P P related complaint by ninety percent or eighty percent. Or ensuring zero L T I. At the end of twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-five, this is your, your objective. Training, nineteen, training of nineteen minutes of staff or so, so, and so before the end of twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. All these are what you want to achieve in line with your, with your policy. And with the action to address the rule that you've identified, because it was being in line. And that's why review comes into place, whereas in a particular year, you do a review, you see, okay, these are the issues that we have. Then that will give right to setting your objective in order to ensure that you do everything possible to, 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 to achieve those objectives. That you have set for yourself and that's where we are going to stop today. Then the next time that uh God says that we should, we should come again, would, uh, would, would complete the path. It's, it's already late and it has been a wonderful time. Thank you so much. If you have, at this point, if you have any question, please let us raise our hand. If you have any question, please. Let us raise our hand. Uh, Mr. Absaam, you said on the training I mentioned, is it peculiar, which three are you talking about, Mr. Absaam? Can you kindly unmute, please?
Good evening, boss. Yeah, good evening. Yeah, the trainer, can you, am I able to please?
Yes, yes, yes.
The trainer I was asking of, well, you know, you mentioned training in terms of objective. So the trainer I was talking about is, is he peculiar to H S E training a lot or training? Uh, that is centered around uh improvement, let's say for an, for an engineer, is design engineer. Is he, uh, can, a training like, uh, a running for N F P A? Maybe N F P A twenty thirteen, serve as, uh, serve to, uh, serve as a means of achieving that objective of training. I don't know if I'm clear.
Yeah, if that particular, if.
Hello?
It, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes, if that part, if that particular training is needed to, is part of your objective now, it should, it should not be, the way you would develop your objective. It, it, it should not be peculiar to just one particular engineer. Now, you can call it, uh, um, uh. The H R, for example, can call it, let's say, specific training needs. Uh, implementing, we did, we did use all implementing, you, you can call it. Training, uh, engineers on specific training needs before the end of twenty twenty-five. Now, most times the H R people will have highlighted the particular trainings that they want to. Give the, the engineers, maybe if an operator will go for lifting operational training. Uh, an engineer will go for N Q E or whatever you call it, training, those specific trainings will be mentioned. Later in their document, but what you said, the objective, the objective will be that you want to implement. Training of ninety percent of so, so engineers on specific training need before the end of twenty twenty-five. So that one will give room to a, what are the specific training needs that, that they need? So when you are now auditing, if I, for example, I'm, I'm now auditing, what I'll now do is that since they said specific training needs. I'll now look at the training that was, that was done. Then I'll now ask the question, is this particular training, is it specific to this engineer? So that will give room for them to be able to see the effectiveness of that particular objective. So to answer your question again, they can specify specific training needs in the objective. Before, and they just make sure that it is smart, it's not something that, they should be, it should be time bound before the end of so, so, and so. And that will do for setting the objective. Do, do you get that, sir?
Okay. Alright, thank you, sir.
Uh, any other question, please?
Um, uh, hello, Valu?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the, the, my question is, if I want to audit an organization for this ISO standard, is there a standard template? That an individual can use or how do I do it?
Okay.
If, if, for example, internally, internal audit, just, just preparation for the certification, thank you.
No, there's no particular standard document that you can use, that's why you need to develop your own audit plan. And the document that you used to do an audit, depending on the scope of the audit. There's no general document, every document that you see, maybe a checklist that you see, it is, it is, it is just a guide. Most times, if you want to develop, uh, if want to carry out internal audit in line with the ISO standard, if you go online specifically. You can see, you can, you see so many checklist, these checklist are. They contain every requirement of the standard, not, but not everything might be needed by you, that's why you must always stay loyal. So what may I do is that, for example, I want to go and audit an organization. I would ask for the, the risk assessment. No, the risk assessment, they will have included action to address risk. So I'll use that to develop a checklist for them, then they are set objective too. I'll use that to develop a checklist for them to see how we are meeting with the objective. And the general requirement of the standard and how it applies to them specifically. So not just to pick a general document outside there and just use it to do, uh, to carry out your audit. You must assure that for every audit that you want to do, your audit checklist can, will just guide you. Will just guide you on what to do, it should not rely so much on the particular document, it should guide you on what to do. So you, you need to develop those documents yourself most of the time.
Okay, thank you, really appreciate it.
Right. Alright, thank you very much. So, uh, before everyone goes off, please, uh, size few patients, uh, very quickly. Uh, this call, okay, this, uh, advanced construction safety course, that one is gone already, we, we finished that last week. Um, but we see, we have the recordings anyway. They're setting the pace, I don't know why many of you have not registered for setting the pace. Setting the pace this year is going to be more promising. Please, let's ensure that we register as soon as possible because your education will help us to plan our, to plan ahead very well. And if you, if you have sponsors, if you feel your company can sponsor us for setting the pace, please, uh, you can reach out to me.